Um, all right, let's get going. Welcome to the March 25th Village Board Meeting. Public comments, feel free to send an email to the village clerk at H Holstead at thevillagerwebster.com to register, or you will be given an opportunity during the meeting. So it looks like there may be someone on. Does anyone have any comments for the board? All right, we will move into village business and then close that portion at this time. So right now, we'll move right into the agenda, and we're going to do a resolution to approve the minutes for March 2nd and March 16th. Has everyone had a chance to review both of these?
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on any of these notes, minutes? I know Judy and I missed the March 16th one. But I did follow up with some of the conversation that you guys had via mail. So I do not have any questions.
I talked about it, so I don't.
Carl, you're good as well?
I'm good.
All right, so I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes for March 2nd and March 16th.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
See, Lancy?
Hi.
Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Trustee Kane?
He's muted.
See, and trustee Apolito?
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right, then I will ask for a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. Hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to look at these. I picked this up this afternoon from Heather. Does anyone have any questions? Al, you usually have a few.
Oh, I'm good.
Yeah, there wasn't much to it.
Yeah, it was kind of light, huh? That's good.
And understandable, so I didn't have anything.
Hey, Joe.
Hey, quick question. Jake, what happened last night in front of your house?
Um, there was an accident. Down the road, it's a fuzz.
Everybody all right?
What's that?
Everybody all right?
I think so. I was down at my dad's at the time, so.
Oh, okay.
There was a question of the last bill pay regarding some batteries, and it was it was two batteries for the Batco that were asked about that we had to get, so the Batco has two batteries on it, so.
I apologize if I ever questioned that, but let's move on. Let's get a resolution to approve the claims and warrants then.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lancy? Trustee Belkane? Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Trustee Apolito? Motion passes.
Thank you, Heather. All right, so now I'm going to be looking for a resolution to authorize the village clerk to sign the engagement letter with RE/MAX for deferred compensation plan, which is in our pack. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to review that. Heather, would you like to add some comments on that?
Thank you. So I gave it to Don, and he reviewed it, and we need to I'm still waiting to hear back from RE. They're going to delete the last two sentences, but I thought we could still pass it contingent on those two changes, if that's okay?
Don?
Don, you're okay with us?
So you're going to authorize the mayor to sign an engagement letter that the village hasn't really received yet? Fine, if you guys want to do that, go ahead.
Well, what is the big, is there a concern, Heather, if we wait for the letter?
I don't think there's a big time crunch to do this.
Can we?
Why not wait till we get the actual letter?
Makes sense.
They had two sentences in there where, again, they try to limit their damages to the cost of their audit, you know, and every year I tell them to take it out of there and they put it back in. So it just took a while. If they had to run it by their partners, blah, blah, blah. Supposedly, they're going to take them out.
Okay, then no one else has a problem waiting, correct?
But I haven't, we haven't actually seen the letter, so, you know, assuming they take those out, those two sentences out, I have no objection to it.
It was just that.
Why don't we just wait for the letter? And we don't have to make a motion at table, correct?
They weren't planning to start to do this within the next two weeks, were they?
They already started. They actually already started doing the preliminary.
Well, it's.
It's totally fine. I'll talk, I'll talk.
Look, if they're already doing the work, they're doing it at their own risk by doing it before they actually engage in an engagement letter, so, you know, it's really, it's no skin off the village's nose. It's really on them.
Yeah.
Okay.
No problem, thank you.
So easy enough, we'll just wait.
Yeah.
All right, so item number four, this is to approve the form sufficiency and manner of execution for the Greenbrier Crossing Townhome Development Letter of Credit. And I believe, Don, you have a little information on this, or no?
No, I review it, and it's the standard letter of credit that that commercial banks issue, and this is five-star banks' standard letter of credit. It's identical to a letter of credit to the letters of credit they gave to the town for the similar townhouse development off of State Road. And, you know, my only question, this is more for Jake, I guess, is, you know, it expires in one year from May 1st, but it's subject to another year of automatic extension for an additional year. It's automatically renewed for an additional year. So I don't know, I forgot how long Jim Barbado said it was going to take them to do Phase 1. Was two years? Was he going to get it done within two years, Jake? I just don't remember.
Honestly, I don't recall the whole thing being a four- or five-year plan, so Phase 1 be shorter. But that did seem, when I first looked at it, I saw only one year, and I thought that was very, very aggressive. Then I saw that it can renew for two.
I don't have a problem with approving this, subject to, could Jake, could you just call Jim Barbado? I think he's planning to get, to have Phase 1 done within two years. But we just need to confirm that.
Yeah.
I guess if Phase 1 wasn't completed, then we'd still have the letter of credit. We can draw against that to get everything completed.
Well, that's true. If it's not done by May 1, 2023, you're right, we could do it ourselves, so.
I don't want to, so I'm sure.
Well, that's probably in the, yeah, you don't want to, but that's probably in favor of the village also, but.
Yeah, I can get information from them first, their plan, their schedule there.
So would we like, you want that first done, or are you good with approving this form?
Well, I'm good with approving it so long as Jim Barbado is comfortable with the two years, which he must be. He's the one that submitted this thing, so.
Just something we want to bring back, Jake, or no?
If he doesn't get it done within the two years, the village can cause it. And this is just for the infrastructure, the roads, the sewers, the sidewalks, you know, the streetlights, all that stuff. It's not for the actual townhouses themselves.
Would it require signatures, though?
No.
Not asking for a signature, right? It's just.
No, no, it doesn't require a signature by the mayor or anybody. It's just, the village code requires that the village board of trustees approve the form sufficiency and manner of execution.
What?
So the form is fine, you know, the sufficiency is the right amount of money, the $1,909,057.44, that's what was in the engineer's estimate that was approved by the zoning board, I almost called them the planning board again, the zoning board, you know, so the amount, and it's just, again, the only concern I had was the two years, but if he doesn't get it done in two years, I guess the village can finish the streets, and it's not all of the streets anyhow. It's just, it's Phase 1.
All right, so I think, is everyone comfortable? I'm comfortable with it. So I'll ask for a motion to approve this form.
I'll make that motion.
See, Lauer?
Hi.
Trustee Lancy?
Hi.
Trustee Belkane?
Hi.
Trustee Apolito?
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right, so now we're going to be seeking a resolution to authorize Mr. Bayard to sign a letter of intent to purchase a new flush truck. So I don't know if Heather or Jake want to explain. Heather explained to me today why we are doing that. I don't know. I would assume Jake has a little more knowledge on this, maybe. You're muted, Jake.
And I just told you everything I know. The, I want to make sure I have the right figure. Marcia, the flush truck is a 369, was it? You're muted, too.
You're muted, too, Marcia. If I read your lips right, it said $125.
Okay.
There you are.
I have it right here. Okay. It is $370,152.
And that'll be, that's a lease that is going to be spread out over a number of years.
Yep, that's five payments of $78,277 a year. And the first one would be due on delivery, which probably would be in the fall.
So we're talking next budget cycle?
Yes, the one that we're planning for right now.
And that's by signing this before March 31st, it saves about $8,000
Yeah.
The cost of the increase, which seems like everything is going up. We're about to pull for a street sign, so they used to be $23, they're $49 now.
And then you already had a proposed number for this budget anyway, didn't you, for the next budget?
Yeah.
Do you remember how much that was offhand?
That was for more. I think that was for $389.
Okay.
But he bumped it up a little bit deliberately because it was a budgetary number. He wanted to make sure that we didn't underbook.
Makes absolute sense. Okay.
How much do we get for the old one?
E nuts.
Yeah, compared to this, we'll probably end up with $25,000 or so. I mean, the old one is a 2003, so it's 17 years old. Certainly, it's still a nice, you know, for somebody, a nice truck, but it's getting tired, so.
Yeah, nobody wanted the trade-in either.
Yeah, it's such a specialized piece of equipment that it's tough, I think, you have a limited pool of buyers. So that certainly, you know, it's doing demands down there. Who are we buying it?
Who's that? He wants to know who you're buying it from, Jake.
It's Joe Johnson equipment. It's off of Sourcewell, or it used to be the NJPA. It's a, they're bid, the vehicles are all bid, you know, following the New York State rules. It's a buying consortium, like, there's a few different ones around. It used to be NJPA, now it's Sourcewell. There's another one, it's Houston-Gelveston one. And, you know, there's some other local county ones for New York State, too, but this is the Sourcewell one.
How often do we use that?
Every, you know, every day we're open, really. I mean, we have the potential to use it. In the wintertime, we try to take it out as little as possible, just because there's water in it and, you know, freezing things. But we used it. We've been using it almost every day the last two weeks. Here, running some storm lines and stuff like that. We've been breaking the weather, we're running and using it. We use it to flush lines all summer long. That's part of the ongoing, you know, the maintenance of the collection system is flushing the lines. Whenever there's, if there's an issue or a backup, that, you know, that's very important. And when our pump stations, we have generators, one of them has a standby generator, the other two don't. So we have to either bring a trailer or a generator over there, and in the meantime, we're pumping out with this, too, to try to stay ahead of it when the pumps, we only have three pump stations left, Lee. But when power goes out, it's an issue.
Okay, great. So I'm on the look for a motion to authorize mayor buyers. Does this have to be signed anytime soon? I can stop it and sign it, Don, if that's okay, if it's got to be quicker. I have no idea when Daryl's coming back.
We have him signing a letter.
March 31st.
Okay. To look for a motion to sign the letter of intent to purchase the new flush truck.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Trustee Belkane?
Hi.
Trustee Lancy? Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Trustee Apolito?
Hi.
All right, so we're looking for a resolution from this fine bunch to set a public hearing on our tentative budget for the '21 and '22 fiscal year. And we're going to schedule this for April 8th at 7:15 PM. And I'll make sure I show up for this one.
So before you vote on this resolution.
Yes, sir.
Is there a tentative budget? Because you're next going to have a budget discussion.
Correct.
So is.
That's why we use the word tentative.
Well, there's, it seems like there's some, you know, choices you still have to make, that the clerk is asking you to do, so until you make those choices, is there a tentative budget?
Um, I guess, Don, if.
It's, look, it's about the village, 5-508 of the New York Village Law says, "The village clerk shall present a tentative budget to the board of trustees at a regular or special meeting to be held on or before the 31st day of March." So has a tentative budget been presented by the clerk? Those things, even the one that says two different choices on the sewer rent, $195 or $200, you're calling that the tentative budget?
But isn't this just setting a, setting the meeting? Does that, doesn't mean it's, it doesn't say, you know, it's still a time?
Well, all right, but the tentative budget has to be presented at a regular or special meeting. So by March 31st, which is Tuesday. So if you don't have the before, if you don't have the tentative budget now, you have to call a special meeting between now and Tuesday for the village clerk to present it to you. Sure, you can take the motion ahead of time. I'm just telling you that, you know.
Don, you told me that I didn't have to do that.
And I, but Heather, and you called me at 4:15 yesterday, and the first thing I said to you was, "I'm standing on the tee at Shadow Lake Golf Course, so I'm sorry I didn't have Village Law Section 5-508 memorized."
And you weren't at work?
And frankly, you could have looked it up as easy as me.
We are sorry. We're going to go to a commercial break. We'll be right back.
The problem is, the problem is we had a very last-minute unfortunate.
No, I understand that, so, but, so if you want to do number seven before you do number six, and maybe you'll come up with your tentative budget tonight. I don't know.
All right, so that's simple.
Then you don't need your special meeting. The other thing, just while I'm on a roll here, the other thing, the notice doesn't say the place for the meeting. Are you, you know, my suggestion would be to hold it in person and not do it via Zoom.
Yeah, that's just a draft for the paper. It's not done yet, but yes, it will be in person.
So just make sure you include where you're holding it, you know, the community meeting hall, all that stuff. Otherwise, you got everything else in there.
So Heather, until we do, like, prove these things or approve the letter, I would have the background draft across your paper, and then that way, Don will never question that it's the final document. It'll say draft on it.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
I like. All right, so we are going to go into budget discussions before we attempt to approve a tentative budget, because I guess, as Don stated, if we don't all agree tonight, it won't be tentative.
Well, technically, you're not approving the tentative budget.
Right, the hearing.
Technically, it's the village clerk. She can submit whatever budget she wants to. It's just got to be a budget, and then you guys can add, subtract, do whatever you want.
Well, kind of how we were getting around that is that we, Marcia and I already did submit the budget to the board members, and.
Was it at us?
Yes.
Was it at a public meeting?
We've now done it two, yes, you just weren't there, sorry, Jerry. It was at the workshop. We've already presented it, and then something happened, so we have to make a change. So they.
Right, so is Don saying that it's not done?
Yeah.
We thought. Sorry.
Get what he's saying?
I do.
All right, so.
We'll amend it tonight.
Yeah, it's not, I'm not, yeah, it's because of all the stuff with the trying to forgive debts to sewer things, and, you know, it didn't, that didn't make a whole lot of sense to me, how a fund balance could go up if a fund balance was owed money, and now they're not getting that money, yet the balance still goes up. That logically, that didn't make a lot of sense to me, so. But I'm glad you figured all that out and got all that straightened out.
Yeah, the OSC had given us some kind of not the best information, so I apologize, but we are in better shape now.
So when is the hard deadline for us to say we're in agreement, since Daryl also is not here as the mayor?
You got to, you have to have a public hearing before April 15th, and you have to adapt the budget before May 1st. So technically, May 1st is your deadline.
Okay.
We don't need to make a final decision tonight, if we're not.
No, you're not. You can't make a final decision until you hold a public hearing.
What they mean is about the tentative budget. So can I just speak to this really quick, please? I'm sorry. Okay, the only things that we're waiting on, and we already had answers from Daryl. He told us that he wasn't going to be able to make it, so we had a 1 o'clock meeting with him, which we sent out in an email. So we know what his thoughts are. We're waiting on two things, the sewer rate and the tax rate. Everything else, we mostly know. Marcia's just got a couple other questions she's going to ask, and then we're going to, we can literally send it to you tonight. If we have to have a special meeting and do it two seconds on Tuesday, you know, that's no problem. We can do that, but we're in good shape now.
If you answer, if you answer the questions, and Marcia's sitting at her computer, and she can fill in the blanks, do whatever she has to do, and then email it to everybody tonight, you're all set. You don't have to hold a special meeting, because you're doing it at a regular meeting.
Okay. I think we're all on the same page. We're just saying it a little different.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with you, Jer.
All right, so Marcia, we're going to turn this over to you to explain these two changes.
Okay. Has everybody had an opportunity to check out the email from this afternoon?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a bunch of yeses. What about you, Jake?
Muted.
Jake. Jake, you're muted. If you're trying to, there you go.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Give a big thumbs up.
Okay. Um, let me get back to that screen so I can look at it also.
Put it on the thing if you want me to, Marcia.
Budget meeting.
Oh, that'd be great. Yes.
All right, bye.
I'm going to just cancel all vaccinations tomorrow at the Codex, so.
I hit the wrong button?
I think all your suggestions make a lot of sense.
Okay.
And that you just got to decide, is it going to be, what, $2.18 or $2.19, $17, I forget which one it was, and $195 or $200?
Yeah.
Daryl, well, and there are a few other things as well. Heather, were you going to share your screen and show that email?
I'm just getting, I'm just getting it right now.
Oh, okay. Um, yes, Daryl is leaning toward 218 for the tax, and he said 200, didn't he, Heather, for the sewer?
That's what it is.
$195 or $200, he said he was comfortable with either, and he was going to leave it up to the rest of the board to decide that.
Okay.
Now, are we starting to think about, Jake, if we're on, continue on our own, some of the collection piece of this?
Yeah.
And that number?
I don't follow the question, I guess. The, I mean, the collection part's in there.
And we think this is enough to cover basically what I'm asking?
Yeah, and this budget includes, you know, a normal operating year, I guess, of sewer. Really, the $195, obviously, that's more than we need now. That's kind of, that would be the rate if we continued, if we, when we continued on our own and did our own project, that's about the rate, so I think that's what he was talking about, $195, $200, because that would remain stable for a pretty long time. It's expected to, you know.
Yeah. Daryl's. Sorry. Daryl's intention has been all along to take that increase, and that's our rainy day fund in whatever form it is.
Yeah.
However, you can't, you can't build a nest egg without a nest. And sewer doesn't have a nest. We've got negative fund balance, we've got that gigantic debt, so we have to clear those things up, and then as long as we go through with that rate increase, I'm thinking that we can pay off the piece of the debt that sewer shouldn't be keeping, you know, the part that we did not determine should have gone over by the end of the next fiscal year, fiscal year '23. And then after that, as far as I'm concerned, the whole surplus can go into to build up the fund balance and to build up the debt reserves, or any reserves, the reserve accounts.
Yeah.
So it's just for the next couple of years that sewer's got to do some catch-up before we can start to really save.
What's the rough impact on somebody just rounded off and has a $100,000 house? What's the, what's their increase going to be roughly? With the increase?
Everybody's paying.
And the 218?
You mean ADU or tax? No, he means the tax rate.
Oh, the tax increase is negligible, very, very tiny.
What's the, what's the current tax rate?
$13.
So it's five cents, five cents per thousand, so on $100,000, that's what, 50 bucks?
No, five bucks.
Five bucks?
Five dollars.
I'm not good at math with all those zeros. So that's the answer to your question, Al, it's $5.
Yeah.
Well, $5 for the tax, and then, you know, 50 or 100, depending, for the sewer.
So basically, I'm going to see an increase like $100 bucks. No, $55.
Yeah.
Yeah, the five and the 50.
Right, right.
Yeah, right. All right. Thank you.
That's for the whole year, obviously.
Yes.
I know it's got to be done, but, you know, some people are going to bitch, bought 58 bucks. Think the word is complain.
Yes, I would use a different word.
The half of, you know, it's a small.
Don't we have a bleep?
They will share their opinions.
Or we'll have concerns, it would be a better word.
There you go.
I like you, Jerry.
And all we would have to say, really, is that, you know, if you went to the town, it's going to be more as well, and it's going to, you know, it's going to go up. If you go to the town, and then if we end up going regional, it's going to go up even more.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Jake, our tax rate is the best as far as all the villages in the economy, correct? I know you sent that email out. Absolutely, yeah.
Quite a lot, isn't it?
Yeah.
You were still lower, Jake, what was that, 10 years ago, when it was 222?
Yeah, when I first was involved as a village in 2005, it went from 232 to 222. And so we're still, you know, four or five cents lower than we were in 2005.
Yeah.
So. So.
I just.
That's crazy.
It is.
I think it's reflective of everybody's efforts, the boards and all the employees, everybody's efforts to, to spend money wisely, and be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and, you know, and, and frankly, we are, and we should apologize for it, you know, we, I, I think everybody, you know, is, is, is cheap, really, not cheap, but they're, you know, value-driven, and wanna make sure we're getting, you know, with the taxes, you're getting what they're paying for, getting their good, good bang for their buck, and, I always say we're like the triple A of governments, you use one of our services once during the year and you, you, you're paid back, you know, it's just like, you pay for triple A, you gotta get told once a year, or get a service, you're, you're, you get your money back out of it, and that's all, kinda how the village is, I think. You know, we're very, very, very good value.
Then I would make another point, that when, originally, when we created the sewer fund, and it was, what, ninety-eight, I believe? Um, no one really knew exactly what number to put, it should have been a lot higher, but unfortunately, you know, it was kind of like a shot in the dark. So it should have been a little bit higher anyway.
You know, I, I, I disagree with Heather, but just to clarify, we purposely made it, we know it wasn't enough, but we didn't wanna make it too much, so we purposely made it just enough to cover, and it did. Um, you know, there was, it wasn't so much a shot in the dark as a, as kind of a planned, not, you know, and we didn't wanna do an overreach. We said, hey, let's see what we, the minimum we have to get to cover our cost, and then, because we never, sewer was never separate before. Um, so, you know, I think the biggest oversight, when that, when that happened, was the fact that they didn't transfer any of the fund balance over to sewer, you know, there's no recognition that the sewer had contributed to it. And it's really hard, Marcia did a great job trying to come up with, um, you know, what sewer contributed, you know, what, what the sewer, um, operations had contributed to, you know, by underspending, you know, expense lines and over-realizing revenue lines, what they contributed to that fund balance over, over a period of time, and, and that's really hard to go back and try to recreate.
I'd be happy to share that with anyone who's interested to.
Don't look at it, it'll make your eyes hurt.
Yes, I am, definitely.
So what, any other changes from when you guys last met?
Um, there are a few more, uh, when we last met, we were not anticipating the need to pull anything out of the vehicle and equipment reserve, so now I'm suggesting that we do that to cover the full cost of the replacement vehicles we have scheduled. Um, I think, oh, and then the other thing, did what I said about the contingency accounts make sense? If we, if we put a large amount in the contingency account, it's kind of, uh, this is something that Tim suggested, it's kind of a workaround to, um, it's a way to kind of artificially keep the unassigned fund balance lower than it sort of is. That makes sense.
So.
Rather than just not budgeting it, we're gonna budget it in contingency with the intention of using little to none of it. So we're just putting it in a different bucket.
And it's like a legal savings account, yep, it helps, it makes the budget look good, and it's like a legal savings account, so we're able to, instead of, we can't on reserves right now, um, but we're able to, you know, start saving for that. And we put very little into the contingency, contingency usually, and as we remember, if you talked to Freed, when Freed came, they mentioned that, um, we could put a lot more in, and, um.
If I recall, it was up to, go ahead.
What did you originally budget for the, in the general fund for contingency?
Eight thousand, is it, Heather, do you remember eight?
Yes, eight thousand for general and two thousand for sewer.
Alright, so, so, so from, you're gonna go from eight thousand to, you're gonna add an extra thirty-six thousand, so what's it? So you'll, you'll have, uh.
Forty-two, forty-two, two.
Yeah, so, and, uh, how much is the general fund, like in total, like what are your total expenditures?
Oh, the total expenditures are, let me get out of full screen here. Okay. Total budgeted general fund expenditures are two million, eight hundred forty thousand.
So, so having a forty-four thousand dollar contingency account for two, whatever you just said, a two point two million dollar budget, is certainly not excessive. Probably the same with the sewer, so you had, you had only two thousand in contingency for the sewer, and now you're gonna add another little under twenty-five thousand, so twenty-seven thousand on, you know, their total expenditures, that's,
Yeah.
that's probably really low anyhow.
And that's just a little over a million expenditures for sewer.
Yeah, so, so to, so to have, so to have, um, you know, that much in contingency, I don't think anybody can really complain about that.
Right.
And who knows, they'll try not to spend it, but sometimes
Sometimes you have to.
repairs, sometimes there's emergencies and stuff happens.
And that's exactly what it's for.
Right.
Right.
So the alternative, if you didn't do that, you would have to, you would hit to balance the budget, now you gotta, you know, the tax rate'll, you know, go down from that two eighteen, it would be, you know, you'd have to do the math, and then, and then the sewer fund, instead of one ninety-five, would be, you know, a hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty cents or something crazy, you know? You'd have to just do the math, because you always have to, you always have to pass a balanced budget.
Yeah, well, either that done, or we would have to, um, eat up some of that surplus by putting it in reserves, which, you know, then it's very limiting.
Well, same, same diff- difference.
Well, except that the contingency fund, there are zero limits on what it can be spent on.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but it's just, you, you have to put it somewhere, you know? It, it's gotta go in some account somewhere, otherwise, you gotta, you gotta eliminate it, cut it from the budget, and then that'll change the amount you're gonna raise by taxes, or the amount for the sewer rent, because, again, you have to have a balanced budget.
Yep.
You can't intentionally budget for either a surplus or a deficit.
Yep.
Right.
And I, I did just wanna point out that, um, sewer actually, if you, if you're not looking at the sewer debt, and I know this is probably, everyone probably knows this, but just to point it out, um, sewer was actually profitable last year, or this current year. So, um, this looks really good, you know? Yeah, so this looks really good, and if sewer can, is able to pay off their own, that portion of the debt, you know, this, this really is good, it's, we're in a good situation with sewer. And, go ahead.
So, but Marcia, so those numbers were based on a, a tax rate of two dollars and eighteen cents and a sewer rent of one ninety-five, correct?
Correct.
So if you go with Daryl, who wants two hundred bucks, it's gonna change all those numbers.
Yeah.
And if you increase it to two nineteen, it's gonna change all those numbers.
Yeah.
Right, so either, either you've gotta sit there, if you're, if, if the majority of the board is inclined to change, go with Daryl, we're gonna have to take a pause, so, so Marcia can do all the math, to come up with how much is gonna go in contingency, otherwise, you gotta have a special meeting between now and Tuesday. So. So that's really your choice. Stick with the two eighteen and one ninety-five, and basically, you've got your tentative budget, or if you're gonna do what the mayor suggested, Marcia's gotta do some more figuring.
Marcia, do you, do you have, you don't have those already ran, just in case, or no?
Um, I have the basics, but I have to, I would have to redo the numbers in my email. Or, I mean, if you wanna just go for the higher tax rate and sewer rate,
Yeah.
just know that, you know, the end result is that the contingency amounts would be a little higher. I mean, you're happy with that, I, I gotta go get my chart for one sec.
Keep in mind as well, that just because you're passing the tentative budget, you're just passing it so it can go in the paper, and people have their chance to review it, you can still change it or re-adopt.
You're, you're not even passing it, you're not taking a vote on it.
I know, I know.
Actually, you're not gonna take a vote on anything, really, what you should just do is say, uh, I like two eighteen, or I like two nineteen, or, you know, whatever, because it's the clerk, at this point, it's not your budget, it's the clerk's budget.
Okay, we just vote on this and be done with it?
No, you gotta have a
No, you can't vote on it, the only thing we're doing is gonna have a resolution to set the public hearing if we agree on the numbers.
Only reason I'm pointing that out is just because, you know, it's okay if you make it one ninety-five, we'll change it.
The, the rest of all this is no different than one of your budget workshops, you're just telling the clerk and the treasurer the direction that you would like to go.
So, Board, are you in favor of leaving, uh, what was presented, or where Daryl's at? That's the question.
One ninety-five, Jude agrees with that.
Jude wants one ninety-five?
One ninety-five, two eighteen, yes.
I do too.
Mr. Belkane? Yep, you said?
Good.
Alright, so that's three of you, so Marcia
So it doesn't matter what I say.
You don't have to, you don't have to redo the numbers, and the clerk has presented you with a tentative budget.
Yay!
Awesome, now you can take, now take the resolution to set the public hearing.
So I'd like to ask for a motion to set a public hearing for the tentative budget for the twenty-one and twenty-two fiscal year for April eighth, twenty twenty-one, at the Village Hall Meeting Room at seven fifteen P M. I added that for you, Don, the Village Hall Meeting Room.
Very good.
I'll make that motion. I'll start it.
Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Belkane?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Trusty Abolito? Motion passes.
Alright.
Oh my gosh.
Very good. And Marcia and Heather, good job on the budget, I think, I think your solution is very fair about, you know, splitting up the, the fund balance to what the sewer should have had, because that, that's, you know, but then still paying back part of it, that protects, you know, the rest of the taxpayers in the village, so I think it's a very good result.
Yes, good, good job, good numbers.
And it did, it occurred to me, maybe an hour ago, that if we, if we all agree that General is going to forgive, they're not really forgiving it, because sewer should have had it all along, we can do that in increments, we don't have to wait until General's got a big chunk, we can just ship away it until sewer's got what they, what they are to get.
Yeah, thank you, yes.
Yes, very, thanks for the hard work.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Captain Crunch, we're gonna start calling you Captain Crunch, crunching numbers. Was that the answer to your cereal question in the interview?
She didn't get that question.
Oh, she didn't get it, oh.
No.
What's your favorite cereal?
No, if you were a cereal, what cereal?
Uh, yeah, I wouldn't be Captain Crunch, though.
Cheerios!
Alright.
Cheerios?
Well, Don, we're gonna turn it right back over to you for any updates from our attorney.
Uh, I don't think I have anything.
Except don't call you when you're on the golf course.
Don't call me when I'm on the tee, right.
The better question is, don't answer it while you're on the tee.
Very good.
It was, I, I always answer the phone when Heather calls.
Thank you, Don, that was
Turn it around?
Oh, can I, I would like to interject one last thing, the version of the budget that I sent out to you guys, what is not balanced, because we weren't sure how we were gonna address that, so I will plug in the information that you've just agreed to and send that out, it's our official tentative budget.
Good.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
If everyone gets response to our email, that you received it and agree or something, that'd be nice.
Yeah, okay.
Because you'll, you'll need a form that you can hand out to the public if anybody asks for it.
Okay.
Oh, that's a good, okay.
Yeah. I'll have that all set.
Alright, uh, Jake?
Yes, um, just, I always say just a couple things and I go on for fifteen minutes, so, I'm really gonna keep it for just a couple things. We got the, got the appraisals back for these, the, the parcels on the sandbar, uh, absent the, uh, wells. Um, so I'm not sure, I think I neglected to send those to everybody, so I will do that, um, I'll do that in the morning. Um, but we did get their appraisals back, um, and they were, I think the appraisals themselves, I think Don pointed out, were, were, the appraisals themselves cost more than the value of the parcels.
Three times as much.
Um, it's kinda where we thought with, you know, there's such tiny little lots there, so, oh, now we have something we can act upon, or the board can act upon, um, you know, it's a up-to-date and official appraisal, so, there's that. And then the only other thing I had is a couple of, uh, request some surplus declarations for, um, W four, which is one of our six-wheelers. Um, it's the one that we replaced, it was, used to be W seven, and we replaced that a few years ago, and we sent W four down to sewer, um, for hauling sludge, but we're hauling with the, um, we have a dumpster there with a cover on it and things, um, and that's getting hauled out of there, so we don't need this, uh, dump truck anymore. Um, and they were placing a lawnmower down there, so we're looking for a surplus declaration for what we call W fours, a dump truck and a ferris lawnmower that's, that's sewer. Right now.
Okay. Not bad.
Thank you. Heather, do you have anything for us tonight?
Jake, can you clarify this, only one W four, not W eight, as we
Yes, there's only one W four, there's, uh, it just moves around so fast, it's Heather's four, but there's only one. Um, and I just need, uh, I guess, a surplus declaration on that, or so, if we're gonna motion in a second to declare those two things.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Oh, that's alright.
So let's, uh, I'll ask for a motion to declare, uh, declare those surpluses for, uh, two, no, one W four.
One, one W four and one ferris lawnmower.
And one ferris lawnmower. Anyone there?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Jake.
One second.
Trusty Nancy?
Aye.
Trusty Belkane? Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Abolito?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, now to our village clerk.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Nothing for you, okay, that's great. So does anyone else have anything this evening that they'd like to share? Nothing? Wow. Um, some public announcements, our, our next village board meeting, obviously, is April eighth, as we just discussed, we'll also have the public hearing at seven fifteen, and our next village board meeting, April twenty-second. Um, I'm not sure if we're talking about going in person from now on, I'm not sure, uh, has Heather Schinger had, yes, has that been decided?
What Mayor Byard wants to do, so I think he
Oh, he doesn't run this ship by himself. What does the rest of the board feel?
So I think he wanted to know what everyone else thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys are ready to ma, go back?
Let's go back and chat tomorrow.
Me too, nine o'clock.
I have my
Really worth.
Uh, the convention center.
Yeah, me too, nine fifteen.
Wear matching shirts, don't forget.
Did you see the one they were doing at the parking lot there, the Codex parking lot, the governor just canceled it for tomorrow?
Really?
Because of the wind.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I might blow that tent over, eh?
Yeah. Um.
The only, I have one, one thing, and I just, I would, I am looking for someone to take Carol Clem's place and get some information on the village into the Webster era. I have asked several people that I know, you know, retired schoolteachers and stuff like that, and I can't find any interest. And if anybody knows anyone, because we need to get that opinion page, we need to let people know what we have going on in this village, and, and they're informed to me.
And Daryl, Daryl should start writing, is he doing a mayor's, uh, letter anymore?
He hasn't, please.
No, he should, we, we should, or he should.
Well, but we aren't, and no one has for months or years.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll chat with Daryl on it, I'll take that action, I don't
Oh, I have one other thing, I do have something, sorry. Jake worked with, um, the library again, with Jason Cool, and Joe helped as well, and, um, they're gonna be doing their Oh, I have one other thing, I do have something, sorry. Jake worked with, um, the library again with Jason Cool and Joe helped as well, and, um, they're gonna be doing their, um, read-alouds at the, um,
At the How many parks?
Yeah, so they're gonna be doing that on two days a week, and they're very excited for that, so they wanted to thank you again for allowing them to do that. Obviously, they're gonna, we told them that, make sure to maintain safety and everything. So.
Good.
That's all.
Nice job, Jake.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, Jude, to your point about putting things in the Herald, you know, you, you, Carol Clem got some kind of stipend or pay for it and then, wasn't it?
Yeah, very spite, if we could do that again, I suppose I can ask, you know,
Well, when I, I'm, see if Anna Hubbell would do something extra for, if the village paid her, to have a special thing.
Wait a minute, she has been doing a few extra things, little, oh, do you know where this place is?
Right, I know.
To do it for us.
You definitely ask her, I think she's definitely
I, yes, because I, yes, and that was last summer. I remember talking last summer with her, yeah.
What about, Missy Rosenberg?
I had her, her daughter Erin for like six months and she just didn't, so I've talked to Missy, Missy is thinking about retiring, so what she does, I'm wondering, no, I mean retiring from her, you know, the whole job, so, and I already asked her about it, but I am now asking, does anyone know anyone else? We have to promote our village.
Does that, have anybody in your running group?
Well, Missy's, Missy's the main one in the running group that lives in the village.
Yeah.
Peter Elder?
No.
Uh, Peter's got enough to do.
He writes enough right now.
Right.
He does everything.
We should have our new building inspector do it.
Yeah.
Erin, oh, James Ford guy.
Sure.
But if anybody
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I think I didn't hear that right. So bad connection.
Yeah, we're listening.
Or, or maybe, maybe someone in the clerk's office could, could take some time to do it.
Don, I am really picking up what you're laying down right there. That's a good one.
Megan's the only one not here, so.
Right. You can find her, cheer her.
Just don't tell her I said that.
Yeah.
Alright, everyone, I guess, um, did we get any emails or any comments or anything, uh, before we go, Heather? Nothing? Alright, so I will, gonna ask for a motion to adjourn at the village board meeting of March twenty-fifth.
Make your motion. I'll second it.
Trusty Bellcane?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Trusty Appolito?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, everyone, it was a very good meeting, Jake, we forgot to put your flag up.
Bye, everybody.
Tomorrow, Jerry.
Oh, no, no, no! No!
Wait, wait, Jake's got a picture for everybody.
No!
Bye.
See you, everybody.
Good, Jake.
Bye-bye.
Oh, God, I love it.
Oh. Bye.
Dean.